Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Golden State Flow Measurement, Inc., to upgrade the city's residential water meter system to an advanced water meter system in the amount of $4,143,826 with a construction contingency of $621,500.
Honorable mayor, members of council, in the previous presentation we discussed water conservation and talked a lot about water, wise water use and the restrictions, reporting requirements that water suppliers are being required to implement. The advanced water meter project before you tonight is an important initiative that will allow the city to better meet these requirements we discussed earlier. The proposed project will not only replace our aging residential water meter system, but it'll add an important customer service, water conservation, and operational capabilities and efficiencies to the water division and the staff and utility billing in particular. This project has been part of our CIP program for some time now. We were at the council update sometime last year, and it's been a project that the public services has been evaluating and preparing for several years. Staff gave an update on the project, as I said, last year, and recently we met with the utilities infrastructure subcommittee to seek input and to move it forward to you for your consideration tonight. Marty Cardone, who's our water services manager, is here tonight, and he's been an advocate, as well as a lot of other folks, for this project. And he was actually here when our meters that are in the ground now were first being installed in 1993. So he's kind of seen the new ones have gotten older, and he's still young, but the infrastructure's definitely aged. In the presentation tonight, I'll review our existing meter system, talk a little bit about it. I'll discuss some of the common billing challenges we have that homeowners and staff deal with on a regular basis, and I'm sure the council's aware of some of those as well. I'll talk about some of the key features of the proposed project in front of you tonight. And lastly, I'll discuss how the staff will use the system to better serve our customers and our system. So we have about 11,000 residential meters in our system. We have about 400 commercial water meters. And as I said, they were all installed in 1993 in a fairly short period of time, I think over about a year's time? No? Marty's shaking his head. And anyway, the residentials were installed, I don't know at one time, the commercials are a little different, but the meters that have been out there have been increasingly inaccurate. Studies have shown as they age, they lose their accuracy, especially under low-flow conditions. And our system that we have, they get read manually, kind of jump into the manual part. They get read manually. And what that does is, if you can imagine walking the whole entire city of San Bruno and putting that little reader on every single meter, it takes a while, and that limits our ability, from the billing standpoint, to we can only bill bimonthly. I'll talk a little bit more about that and what this system's going to do to enhance that or improve that situation. But it takes quite a long time to read the meters, and that limit says. And the meters that we have are experiencing a heightened level of repairs and malfunctions and troubles that we have, again, and it causes staff time and delays with billing, and it also difficulties with our billing folks when they talk to customers, and they may have a zero read or something happens, we won't know for two months. And so compared to 2012, 13, we're at 532 repairs and malfunctions this year, which is $178,000 or so cost. In addition to the meter failure over time, like I said, the meters lose some of the accuracy. The EPA has done several studies about meter accuracy, and in particular, our meters, which I have, the old meters, this is called a Sensus SR2, this is what's in the ground for most people, they tend to lose accuracy about a quarter of a percent per year. So we've estimated that these meters are about 5% less accurate than they could be or should be. And the new meters have guaranteed accuracy at 98.7% for 20 years. So I want to talk about some of the key features to the system. The main features for this proposed system in front of you tonight is the ability for the meters to be read automatically. And when the meter gets read automatically, the data comes into a server and it stores the data, which allows us to access it, to do some analysis, some reporting. And the way it works is there's, we have a touchpad, and you probably see it on your water meter, it looks just like this. This is the new unit that takes a reader that plugs into it, and this sends a signal about what's going on in the meter. If there was ever a failure with the antenna, we could read it manually if we wanted to. But this allows us to be a whole lot more efficient, obviously, with our staff. We can have people working, the meter reader will be doing operational improvements, maintenance, large meter maintenance, which will be helpful, and they'll also be doing outreach for leak detection and customer service. But when we go to this, we'll have reduced maintenance and operations costs because our field visits will go way down. Right now, if we need to do a read when someone moves in or out of a home, we have to, the utility building gives us a list of people that we have to go get a final read for, have to manually go get the final read, bring it back to utility billing, then they get a call maybe sometimes the same day or the next day saying, "We need a new read for the new customer," and we have to go back out, get a new read, and come back. And all that's a manual process for our billing folks. In addition, having accurate meters and real-time data will allow us to better meet our conservation needs, so we'll be able to monitor how much water's coming in the system and better plan for it, and also bring reports out that we have to do monthly to the water board to say, "Here's our consumption for the month of July or August," and we can track that over time. That's one of the things that Basca and the water board have been talking about, is maybe more restrictions and more requirements for water agencies to be more efficient with their water meters and the data that they gather. So the advanced meters will allow us to do that. We can improve our system performance by simply monitoring where the water's going. If we have an area or a project that we want to investigate, we can select a group of meters and see how much water's being used in that general area, what's the pressure zone or a neighborhood where we're going to do a project. And again, there's the 20-year accuracy. The biggest part, the biggest impact to citizens will be, and staff will be our ability to reduce water losses and provide leak detection or leak alerts. And the way that works right now, because we're on a bimonthly billing cycle, and this happens frequently, where a citizen will call into our utility billing staff, very frustrated because they have a very large bill. And our staff is very limited, they don't have any information, they just, all they know is the last read was this, and the new read is really high, and it equals this amount of money. And it's very frustrating for both the customer and for utility billing folks. And they also don't have the ability to predict leaks. Every billing cycle we do, it's called an exception report, the utility billing staff does an exception report, which sort of looks at the usage, and if it's way off the chart, all they know is to send someone out to check it. Or if there's a zero read, if the meter's stuck or broken, we have to go out and manually check it. And so what that means is that we don't really have a good way of doing that in an automated fashion, and it takes months. But with real-time data, our staff can provide a wide array of services and information to our customers that we previously has not been available. One example is that we can set the system up to send automatic alerts if there's continuous water use. So it will automatically send an alert to our operations staff that there's a 24-hour usage, and our water staff can, operations staff can just go right out to the address, knock on the door, make contact, put a door hanger, and let them know, "You have a water leak," and we'll know right away. And that's a big change. And then the homeowner can call us or call a plumber to get more information about what they do from there. But utility billing staff don't need to be involved in that situation, it goes right to the people who can get there the quickest and make the most impact to our residents. The other thing that we can do is set up in the system if there's a huge spike in usage. So maybe their water's not leaking for 24 hours, but they have a sprinkler that's broken off, they don't know about it, comes on at 3:00 in the morning, and their water use goes through the roof. We can set that alert up as well. So again, the alert would go right to operations staff, and it would go directly out to the field for correction. Part of this process, over the last few months, we've met with several agencies. Redwood City is one that's using this system, and our utility billing folks and operations staff, we went down there and asked questions about, "How did you implement it? What did your customers like, not like? How are you using it? How are you doing the leak detection? How did you set up your system? And what are the thresholds for the high use and all those kinds of things?" We also talked to several other agencies who are using it. Dublin-San Ramon has been using it for over a year. Santa Cruz is using the system. There's quite a few agencies up and down the peninsula that are using it or looking to go to this type of system. And one of the things we learned was that it saves a tremendous amount of not only frustration, but time for utility billing staff and time for operations staff, and that the time that they spend on the phone is more active and relevant. But one of the things that the system also does is it reduces our electricity costs because there's no moving parts to this meter, I don't know if you can see it, but there's just a hole that goes through it. There's no moving parts, and we sort of played with these, they're in the infrastructure subcommittee, but that's less friction and loss of head through the system so that we don't have to pay as much power. And then the enhanced proactive customer service, I'll talk a little bit more about that. But our water conservation, because we'll be able to get real data, we'll be able to do a lot better job in helping people understand their water use and providing that information. This is just a photo I brought up of Shasta, 2011 is on the left, and 2014, I don't know what month that is in 2014, but it's pretty drastic. But this system will allow us to manage that water more effectively by monitoring what the water's doing in the system. We'll be able to educate the water users on their own usage, which we can't really do right now, we just get a big bill over two months. And again, to be able to report those findings and that information to our regulators. And we talked about this already, but the proactive alerts for leak detection, the real-time billing, when someone calls in, we can literally bring up their account, look at what their usage is, and tell them whatever they want to know about their usage over time. And we can directly notify customers. So if someone's on the phone and they say, "Can you send me a spreadsheet or a PDF?" Our utility billing folks can click a button and send it to them. They can also set up their own account through the system, they can set up a water budget, and they can monitor their own use, they can set up alerts that will come to their smartphone if that's what they choose to do, so if they reach a certain threshold, or if they have a leak, they can set it up to alert themselves. And again, we can do reporting and analysis. The other thing we can do with this system, our financial department, the finance folks can do analysis on what it would look like if they went to a monthly bill, we'll have the ability to look at that data and make that determination on whether or not that's a good thing to go to and provide that information to the decision-makers. This is a screenshot of what our utility billing folks would look at if a customer called in. They would plug in their address, it's kind of hard to see, but at the very top, and then it would bring up their usage, and in the, I can't get my mouse to work, this is the default screen, and it comes up with monthly, so you can see September, October, November. And if you click on the month, if you clicked on November, it would break it down into 30-day periods. If you wanted to look at a specific day, you could look at Thursday, the 24th, and say, "Well, why is my usage so high? Well, we had Thanksgiving," or whatever. So there's all kinds of flexibility in the system, and down at the very bottom, you can see the PDF and Excel spreadsheets that you can export very easily. This is what the customer could set up, if they chose to set up an account, they could, it's very much the same information, it just looks a little different. They can set up a water budget and some thresholds in the lower-left, and we're not going to have cubic meters, this is just the only slide I could get, we're going to have cubic feet of water. We can provide some information regarding rebates, and also our rates, our tiers, we can message these two boxes down here. But again, they can look at their usage, and they can kind of determine themselves what's good for them and what they want to see. So moving towards the actual project, phase one for the project would be the replacement of residential water meters and the infrastructure that would go along with that. We've spent quite a bit of time with the rollout installation plan and process, in other words, how that billing data would come in, how the meter reads would come in, and how our billing software and our billing folks would handle that. And we've had multiple meetings, and we're very confident about the process because we've learned from what some other folks have done. The total construction cost for this project is $4.7 million. To replace existing meters is $1.8 million. To upgrade to the advanced meter system, the infrastructure for that is $2.1. We have some money for project management inspection, and also $621,500 for a contingency. The alternatives tonight that we've have in your staff report is to not proceed with the replacement of the advanced, of existing meters with advanced water meters, and replace the malfunctioning meters with one similar to the existing. So we could choose to just replace them with something similar to this meter. We could also, an alternative that you might consider would be to explore other means for leak detection and conservation using an alternate technology than the smart technology, the advanced technology. Our recommendation tonight is to, for council to adopt a resolution which would authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Golden State Flow Measurement to upgrade the city's residential water meter system to an advanced water meter system in the amount of $4,143,826 with a construction contingency of $621,500. And that concludes the presentation, available for any comments or any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Through the chair.
Irene.
Jim, you talked about replacing the old ones with the same type of technology, but weren't you saying before that that technology itself is not going to be available for very long?
That's correct. The industry is going towards advanced meter infrastructure systems and meter reading. The meters themselves, we could get replacements for those, but the touchpad system and the software that's involved with that, that we currently have, they're going to phase out, they've said, in the next five years.
Okay, so it's like kind of money down the drain, not to make a pun of it. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Ken?
Jim, what are some of the numbers that we're losing money on that are residents? I saw that you had a lot of case studies and a lot of complaints and things, but give the public an idea of how much money is going, another pun, going down the drain.
You know, we have a financial, I don't know if it's policy or practice, but when there's a leak and someone's got two months' worth of a really big bill, we have a 50%, I don't want to, I'm not sure if the right word's forgiveness, but we split that cost of that leak. And last year, I believe, the city's portion of that was over around $80,000 for that water that was lost. And of course, the other part of that is the customer's piece, and then, of course, the ongoing frustration.
I mean, not to make you do the math, what does that translate to in gallons?
Yeah.
Quick. A lot.
It's quite a bit, and that's one of the things.
Especially in a drought.
Yeah, that's one of the things that Basca and the water board, and there's discussions about, you know, they're getting more and more serious about water waste and what water agencies have to do. And there's some agencies that are already moving to this technology for other reasons, but the regulators are really talking a lot about the advanced systems and making sure that people upgrade their water meters before they start going bad, you know, and sometimes it's 15 years, depends on the meter, 15 years to 20 is, that's the window that you really need to get them replaced, and most people have them in their CIP projects, as we do, to get those replaced.
And lastly, I should know this, but where are we as far as replacing all our water mains? Because if we don't replace our water mains, then a meter's really not, you know, not much of a help.
I know that we have a 10-year plan, we've been really aggressive, and Ray, along with Jimmy Tan, we've been working, they've been working very hard on moving those things forward, and I know that there's quite a few projects that are in the queue right now.
So where are we in the 10-year plan? Are we halfway there? Are we just starting?
No.
Because it just seems like, I mean, if you've got new meters, if you've got new meters that have a 20-year life, and, you know, we're hooking them up to, you know, 10 years later, to 10-year-old, you know, pipes.
Yeah, councilwoman, we have started a 10-year plan, and currently we have several areas of the city, including Genevieve and downtown, under design, and later on this year, we'll be awarding a constructive contract. So the next few years, we're going to be heavy in construction of the 10-year master plan recommendations. And there are different categories, so we're going to be looking at, starting in the Genevieve and downtown area, as well as up on the hill for all the water systems that are grade five, that are inadequate for our supply and distribution.
Ken, Rico?
Just a couple of questions. So in your presentation, there was a 20-year warranty on accuracy. So how is that measured, and what about the mechanism itself?
So we have a 20-year warranty on the product, period.
Period.
Period. So they have, there's an AWWA standard, American Waterworks Association Standard for Water Meter Accuracy. This one degrades over time, this one they're guaranteeing won't. There's a difference. And because this has a mechanical device inside that swirls around and measures the water and turns the dials, this is electromagnetic, water just goes through and it gets measured electronically. And so that's why we're able to reduce quite a few things. And they're pretty lightweight, you know, this is the antenna, that's kind of the business end and how the information goes out to the mothership, so to speak. But this one just has a hole in it, so there's really nothing to wear out as far as water running through it. So it's kind of an amazing thing, it's been, the technology's been around for quite a while.
I know that there used to be in the city, monthly billing, then it went to bimonthly billing, I think that was to maybe save on costs, potentially staff time, so by us reverting back, even though everybody would love paperless, if that may be down the road with this technology, what does that do as far as staff time and/or costs from us going to, back to monthly?
I'm going to ask Angie to try and answer that question. I think that there would not be significant cost savings or significant cost increases, I don't think, in terms of the utility billing end of it. I was actually surprised to find out that we currently have roughly 20% of our utility customers are receiving their bills in a paperless manner. So that actually is, it's more than I thought. It's a good and increasing number, but maybe you can expand on that.
Yeah, I don't think there will be a significant savings, in fact, staff time, it might be that we might have to hire some more people because we're going from 6,000 a month to 11,000 to 12,000 bills a month, so that would be a big impact on staff. So it's something we would have to analyze, we really haven't, I mean, the capability is there, and I know sometimes it would help the customers, so obviously, you know, it helps them plan better than instead of getting a huge payment or a huge bill every two months to actually be on a monthly. So it's something we'll look at once we get used to the new system. I mean, there's a lot of, I don't want to say bells and whistles, but it's very high-tech, so the staff's already going to have to learn a lot on how to run the reports and how it interacts with our payment system. So we'll have to do some analysis on that, if that's something, and that's probably something we would come back to the council to say once we've done that, to see if that's something that you would be supportive of moving to monthly billing, and get some reaction from the public to see if that's something they actually want, some outreach.
May I misunderstood, so this is not to go to monthly billing, there's just that, you're saying there's the capability?
It has the capability.
Okay, so we're not advocating it this time? Okay, thank you. Then I know, because with this new system, it's going to be automated, and I'll use your word, it goes to the mothership, with the information. So I know, if my history's correct, we used to have two meter readers, I believe we have one allocated now, is that accurate? So with this new system, what happens with that position?
So there's quite a few things in the water operations that we routinely do, leaks, you know, repair leaks during the day. What the water meter's going to read or do when we go to the system would be, they'll be the person that would do the proactive outreach. So when we get these automatic alerts on leaks, that would be one of the things, one of the duties. The other thing that we need to do more of, which is valve turning, we need to, a lot of our valves are old, and you need to exercise them to make sure they work when there's fires or leaks, you need to isolate systems, so that's another thing. The other thing that they do would be to maintain our large meters, so the commercial meters that we haven't replaced as part of this, I wouldn't say they've been neglected, but we definitely, they need a little bit more care and feeding. Some of them we would pull out of service to get them tested and upgraded, to put them back in, and then provide just maintenance in the system where we've got blow-offs, we've got pressure-reducing valves that need maintenance, and just normal maintenance in the system.
And you said that you went and talked to other agencies, and they do a form of leak detection, you had brought that concept of the city doing a form of leak detection?
Correct.
Where do you see the city, and what kind of leak detection do you foresee us having the time, the staff, the training, and the equipment for?
So one of the things that this system will allow us to do is, you literally can go in the system, our staff will be able to go in the system, for example, and pick a neighborhood, and grab all of their meters, like physically draw a circle around them, and say, "I want to know what's going on with this neighborhood or this pressure zone." If there's leaks in the system, we can call that a grouping, so we can say, "Group one, group two, group three," and we can monitor that use over time. So for example, if you look at it and you say, "Well, the consumption in the month of July was X, and then the next month, it's way off the charts," there may be a leak in the system that's not come to the surface. So there'll be ways, if we suspect there's an old part, an old water main that we need to keep an eye on, that there's, and Marty's got all this stuff in his head for the most part, but where leaks have happened historically, we may want to isolate meters that are in that area, and then also, we'll know because we have meters on our SFPUC line coming into the area or from our wells, so we know how much water we're producing, we know how much is going to be consumed, there's a loss between the two potentially, and that will help guide us to do projects, or to troubleshoot, or to do big leak detection on water mains.
And we have the, we have all the equipment and stuff to do the leak detections currently?
We might not. We may have to, we have a routine annual, I think it's annual or biannual, contract that where a company comes in and does leak detection, but we would be able to direct them into areas of concern based on real data.
Okay, so we can try to get somebody in a vicinity?
Sure.
In an area?
Correct.
We're not actually going out and actually detecting the leak within the homeowner's responsibility, that would be them going forward and doing that. We may say you have a leak, but we're not really isolating it as a, because when you say leak detection, and to me, that means something different than what you've now explained, which I appreciate you clarifying that.
And we'll break it down too, because we can isolate possibly the water mains themselves, not necessarily leaks on their side, because we're putting water into the water mains, right? And then water's getting consumed, and we'll know how much that is, and where there's a fairly large difference, we'll suspect something's going on in that neighborhood or that area where water's leaking into the ground, and we may want to target an outside contractor, do leak detection on the water main itself.
Thank you. Anyone else? If this is approved this evening, start to finish, wind it up and running.
So we've been working with the contractor and the, to talk about, you know, data transfer and integration, and the installation process itself, we think's about six to nine months. One of the things that we will do is have an employee that will be with them to help troubleshoot, because there's always, tends to be always issues with the water meter box, it's been there a long time, it needs to be adjusted, and kind of hold the hand of the customer, if you will, they'll get notices, set up a schedule, what meters get replaced, and how these meters get integrated into the billing system. But overall, about nine months total time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you. Terry Peterson, this sounds like a great system. In the water industry, it's commonly discussed that losses in the water delivery system, that means the water mains, the branches, and the actual supply. that means the water mains, the branches, and the actual supply to the meters can be 5% to 10%. Does this system, well, that system with the SFPUC supply data and your own well supply data, will it be able, will it make it possible for you to calculate at least what the gross loss is?
Based on the $80,000 that, the number that Jim just mentioned for last year, that was, that would be 50%, so we're looking at a total of $160,000. That comes to about 6 million gallons for last year of loss. That's about roughly 4% to 5% of our total combined production from SFPUC and city wells.
But in the future, with these new meters, you could actually calculate it, isn't that correct?
That is correct.
That'd be great. Oh, that's excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or action by the council?
Do you, there's, I believe, three resolutions on this one? Nope, sorry. I'm looking at the next one. I'll actually introduce this resolution.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.